You're in charge. You can do whatever you want.
I'd like to, at this particular point, open the Board of Selectments meeting for July 13, 2015. And at this particular point, I'd like to move into an executive session for reason number two in the reasons paper for convening executive session, which is to conduct strategy sessions and papers in preparation for negotiations with non-using personnel or to conduct bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So with that, I need a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second and move into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or non-executive session, Mr. Executive session at 6:05, we're gonna have a co-hearing, more to Horizon Star placement, the seven new poles planned, 6815, Copacabana and Sonnet, the abutters have been notified, get some paperwork about that. Let's move on with this paper.
Yeah, it's okay. Those three cards.
That's one. That's, uh, that's a class two motor vehicle. Here's... Okay, this one is for, uh, the seven new pole plan for Copacabana Road. Anybody here from Copacabana Road, the abutters have been notified, sent out some registered mail. Can you read that?
Sankiewicz, Andrew Sankiewicz.
Andrew Sankiewicz has been notified. Michael Ashley has been notified. Uh, notices everybody given that N-Star Company, 180 MacArthur Drive in Bedford, Mass., Horizon, New England, 385 mile standard bullfire tug, mass have submitted a plan for 6815 placement for seven new poles in Copacabana Road. You hear from Horizon to talk about that.
Yep, yeah, from EverSource. We'll talk about that.
We did the Verizon and, um, once already, right? Or no?
It's still a plan. It's, it's, it's like the old, um, I guess I reckon the whole sort of, um, the poles are to service, uh, to Copacabana Road. They were petitioning for previous, like, short means of value, but, um, when the design went out to state the line, they designed the job that we wanted during the terrible winter we had, and we felt the poles would better serve us custom on the opposite side of the road. There'll be less tree trimming, less, I mean, um, is that how, like, the road belongs to state owners, doesn't it? And that's maybe isn't called the poles on the opposite side now.
Okay.
A motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion made and seconded to approve, uh, the discussion on, uh, pole moving. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion for that is approved. Second, we also have a, it says pole hearing relative to Verizon and, I guess it's, uh, EverSource now, for placement of a new pole planned 6812 on Bell Rock Avenue of Sonnet, abutters have been notified. I have returned receipt, requested notifications here for, uh, Devon Pacheco and Andrew Sankiewicz.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Um, the, the reason, uh, the group stop pole and the reason there is because there was a pole to tree guy there at that location, and the tree came down, so the guy came down. And so I wanna put a stop pole to guy that, the pole across the street.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the, uh, movement of the pole from Verizon to EverSource on Bell Rock Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing.
Can't do that till 6:15.
6:15, right, at 6:15. So we consider smiling at each other.
Now we can go forward.
How about, uh, starting with the weekly discussion period.
Sure.
We've got a few minutes here, so we're gonna move on to the weekly discussion, uh, period. Would anybody like to approach the board to discuss anything?
Yes.
Mr. Montour, please.
Okay, I have, I have one, one quick question.
Okay.
Uh, in other words, this is not going to a park two and a half, right? This is going to a proposition set?
What is this?
On the, uh, Richmond, Richmond Road. In other words, it's not gonna be going to a park after this for two and a half.
No, we're gonna take it out of state.
Yes, okay, that's what, that's the way I understood it.
A newspaper article was completely wrong.
Yeah, well, this is why I, you know, I was inquisitive about this here. Uh, but, uh, I have, I have another issue, you know, that, uh, I'd like to bring up.
Certainly.
I, uh, a couple weeks ago here, in other words, the tree warding was on Chase Road doing some tree work, uh, and, uh, he, uh, took down a couple of trees next door, which were very well justified, uh, and, uh, there, there's a picture of the tree that was next door, uh, and after they got done cutting them down, they moved down the street in front of 52 Chase Road and started cutting trees in this person's yard. So I went down with my camera as usual, and the minute I got down there, I got confronted, uh, very quickly. Uh, I was threatening to be sued if I took pictures.
Who confronted you?
Durfee Tree Company, plus those tree warding, okay? And I was told that this tree here was gonna fall across the telephone, across the electric lines, and, uh, they opened it without power, uh, and it went on and went on. But I asked about this tree here on Chase Road, which is dead, completely dead, uh, at 40 Chase Road. And he said, "That doesn't concern me." He said, "These trees here is what, the ones that are gonna fall." And when you look at the tree in conjunction to being taken down, you can see that it's way on somebody's property. And here's one, another one that was taken down back a few months ago, which is in a person's yard also.
Is this Chase, this so Chase Road?
Yeah.
So, but, is this, did this person complain?
No.
Okay.
You mean, the person at 52 Chase Road?
Yeah.
The homeowner? No, he didn't complain. Uh, in other words, it was the tree warding and Durfee Tree Company, we were paying them a lot of money. Those take down trees that are, are not a harvest, but when you look at this tree and you look at the results of it, the greenery that was being taken off of that tree, uh, I mean, it's in somebody's yard. I paid a lot of money to have trees taken down in my yard. And then the town comes along with a backhoe and a truck, a dump truck, picks up the, the stumps, the wood, and brings it to a specific location. Now, uh, we pay the tree warding by the hour, right? No?
No, he gets paid a salary every year.
Oh, okay, I thought it was by the hour. But, you know, you, you have trees all over Chase Road, which are dead, you know? In front of Reverend Dias's house, there's a bunch of them there, uh, right across the street, right?
Well...
They're trees.
That's my mailbox.
Yeah, that's your mailbox. That's the trees in front of your house, uh...
On the other side of my street.
Right.
In front of my house.
But, you know, you have all kinds of trees. When you're taking down good trees on somebody's property. Why?
I can only tell you this, Joe, that, uh...
I mean, there's that tree.
This past year, we upped the budget because of the removal of trees that they, that the tree warding considered dangerous, uh, whether they're rotted or whatever they do. And this thing, I just, and I didn't notice myself, but I understand now that the town can do that, uh, between 10 and 20 feet into people's property from the edges of the road. I guess we have control of that as far as a tree.
Last year, in other words, I asked, there was a tree, in other words, right in the front yard, an oak tree, uh, that I paid a thousand dollars to have taken down, which is six feet away from the edge of the road.
Yeah.
And this one here, these here are...
I don't think last year, I think they burned through their money last year. I think this year we increased our budget by...
But, uh, you know, uh, I, I'm looking at the stuff that's there, uh, and what we're doing, in other words, and the, the way I was confronted, that's what bothered me. That, that I had no right to be taking their pictures. They were on public land, public, public road.
Well, I can't speak or defend or say anything about Durfee. I don't represent Durfee. I don't do any of that, but, um...
Yeah.
The deal is what they say. I haven't got a clue whether they're in their right or not in their right to say that, but some people take it from, when you take pictures of them, other people don't.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I mean, we're, we're leaving a big old rotten tree, and we're taking down one plenty of greenery, uh, and I, I think the only reason they quit sooner than what they did is because of me confronting them. Because my estimation is they would've taken, taken all this down, that, uh, but the minute that I started taking pictures, or the hostility behind it.
So, um, was Mr. Demerandold a tree ward?
Yeah, he was there. He was the one hollering at me, in other words, saying, "If I don't cut this tree down, it's gonna fall down, you're gonna be out of power, and you'll be days without power," uh, and this tree here, in other words, I justified, in other words, taking it down. Fine, I told him, "I'm not a harvest, you know, but don't, don't yell," you know? Uh, and it went on, uh, and, uh, the police officer was there, was very, uh, very nice, in other words, he let me go on the property, take pictures of the tree, and this was the justification for that tree coming down. And when you look at the, the stump of it, there is nothing wrong with that tree, eh?
I'm not an arborist.
I'm not an arborist either, but I'm just, you know, bringing it, uh, you know, uh, and this one here, I'm gonna say that pine tree there, if you recall, I, I had, uh, called you on that, uh, and, uh, but, you know, uh, it...
I was gonna tell you, Joe, we can look into it.
It's nice, it's nice to be liberal, but I think, in other words, we're being a little, a little too liberal. What's good for one should be good together also, right?
I'm gonna look into it.
Uh, well...
See what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm not accusing anyone, okay?
I understand.
But the, the way I was approached is what, right away says, "Guilt, guilt, guilt." You know, "Why are you taking my pictures? Why? Why?" You know? Uh, and that's what made me...
Well, Joe...
What?
Joe, it's very unusual for somebody to come out and start taking pictures of somebody who works, especially if, I mean, they, these guys know who you are, they live right down the street somewhere.
Yeah.
So, you know, and they know that sometimes you, you complain about certain things that you don't like being done in town, so they would get, take a little bit of, get a little bit offensive. You know, some of these trees that, of the pictures that you showed, they're well within the, the, the ownership of the town of Freetown.
Yeah.
They, they, even if they're on, in somebody's yard, it's still within that footage that's allowed.
Uh, well, that, that's what I'm getting to for, in other words, you know, is that I asked before, uh, okay, and, uh, even one of them, that's right on the edge of the road, Ralph Gurney came by when he was tree warding and said, "Can't touch it," in other words, "No, can't touch it, it's too far in the property line," which is on the edge of the road, you know? Uh, but, uh, yep, uh, I, I just felt the, uh, the minute I started, you know, and I was a distance away, in other words, you know, and, uh, I wasn't close to it, uh, so in other words, they really didn't know I was taking pictures. So I told, uh, the guy up in the bucket, said, "Hey, you take my picture, I'll sue you."
I, yeah.
You know, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, I, you can, you can't record voice, but you can take pictures. Well, thank you for the time anyhow, you know, but, uh, like I say, in other words...
You're welcome, Joe.
Uh, I, I just think, in other words, it, uh, it seems as though that, you know, uh, there's a lot of liberalism behind what we've done here, you know? So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Joe. I'll stick around.
Okay, 6:15, uh, 6:15 on our agenda is public hearing to consider class two, a class two motor vehicle dealer's license for Copperhead Industries, Inc., doing businesses Copperhead Custom Cycles for a site at 13 County Road. Now, the abutters have been notified. We do have a bunch of them here.
Yep, returns.
I don't know if you need it.
Yeah.
Just those two that have the return. All the other things, are they?
Now, um, it's very difficult to read these. John, I, I'll read them, though.
Just to see if anything's...
Jan A. Domengala, Southeast Regional Transit Authority, Ruth and Jennifer Haskell, Richard and Melissa Olivira, George and Margaret Wilkinson, Thomas Barlow, Richard Pease and Mary Beth Amador, Richard and Ryan Farmer, Stephen and Diana Westgate, Town of Freetown Conservation Commission, Town of Freetown Conservation Commission, Brent Christine...
Larue.
Larue, that's a Larue.
That's a Larue.
That's a Larue. Those people have all been notified, they're the abutters.
Two return, two who didn't return was Cecilia Cole and Sally Lomos.
Okay. Anybody like to speak on this subject? Approach the board.
You do.
Okay. Shall I come?
Yes, you could. That would be great.
Okay. Uh, basically, uh, you know, Chopper Head is a company that basically mostly rooted in building vintage custom bikes.
Sit, calm down, okay?
I'm used to speaking in New Bedford.
Can you just, um, both state your names for the record?
Oh, okay.
Joshua Downey.
And I'm Jason McGarrett.
You guys own this?
Co-owners, yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, but essentially, uh, we originally started in Freetown at that location, uh, when Jan Senior owned it. Uh, we always liked the location, there's a lot of space, nice area. Uh, essentially, when we bought the building, uh, in October, one of our main goals were to expand the business, um, and basically, one of the parts of expansion was to at least be able to, uh, sell a small amount of used motorcycles every year. I, I mean, basically, we're building motorcycles and selling them already, but it's, it's kind of a different thing than just, you know, going to an auction, buying a motorcycle and selling it. But the dealer's license obviously gives us the, uh, authority to go to the auctions and, and be able to bid on motorcycles that we want to sell.
This is strictly motorcycles?
Well, it is, but we were told to, uh, we were told to just apply for the license that includes both, just because it's, it basically covers more things, you know, essentially.
Well, the issue of, uh, it's a dealer's license, but...
Right.
We can limit what we have, what we issued before. So I just wanna be clear that we're talking about motorcycles.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we basically do, you know what I mean? I think, I think essentially, um, the only thing that we possibly thought of is, uh, you know, me and him both have old cars, you know what I mean? I have a '63 Nova and a '64 Ford F-100. He has a Lincoln, and it's, but if we were gonna sell them and just put them on the lot with a for sale sign, you know what I mean? It would just be like our own vehicles, you know what I mean? So it would just be covered under that, so if I had to go to the registry and get a clean file or something like that, it would just be easier, you know?
It's primarily gonna be motorcycles, but maybe at the most, one or two, um, automobiles. And if, before, before we were there, it was, um, at one point, used for automobiles.
Yeah, we had dealerships back in the old days.
Well, Scott, would you care to comment on this?
Well, I don't know, I'm just listening. I've worked with Jay, you know, when getting his business going.
Scott's our one.
Yeah, we know him.
So, you know, I don't know, I went, I heard that they were going for, you know, automobile license. I mean, it's, it's clear you do, you know, motorcycles, and it's being discussed, so, you know, I don't know, I just hadn't thought of any implication with the property kind of being a car dealership.
No, it's not gonna be a car dealership. I mean, basically, uh, we know a few different people who do dealerships, and they just basically said, "Just get the full license," you know, "That way, if ever there's any time, like, you wanna be able to do something with an, with a car," you know what I mean? "That way, when you go to the registry, you can say, 'Okay, I have to, you know, do this title work with the car and stuff like that.'" I mean, we're not gonna fill out a lot with cars or anything like that, you know what I mean? If on the most, you know what I mean, it would be one of our own personal vehicles, and it would just be easier to sell, you know what I mean?
I look at, I could buy it all the time, I don't, it's far from that. I think you guys have done a great job setting up shop anyway, but, uh, I questioned it as soon as I, when I read the thing, you know, a motor, you know, motor vehicle.
We were just told that it's a better license to have.
I don't know if we'll tell you that maybe somebody, somebody else will hear, that's fine, but my point is that, hey, you got a motorcycle business, I think it's gonna be good business. I went by here one Saturday, there was tons of people there.
Yeah, it was a grand opening.
Yeah, and, uh, it was, uh, I, you know, I think you guys are gonna, gonna have a good business, but personally, my recommendation would be to, uh, limit it to motorcycles. And certainly, if you have, wanna sell your own personal car, I don't think there's an issue with selling your own personal car, but I don't wanna see myself in that area there, 'cause you've got neighbors right near you, and, uh, I think the neighbors have complained about what you're doing now, and I don't wanna hear any complaints in the future where it's all of a sudden you're bringing in some cars. So, I mean, I certainly would recommend the, uh, you know, to the, to the board here, uh, that we would approve the license for, uh, say, 25 motorcycles.
Yeah, presumably that's even more than we need, but, but I get what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying? That would be my, my motion to the board, motion that we would approve it for, uh, a dealership for motorcycles only, 25 motorcycles. And I know motorcycles wanna be kept inside.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that. I, I mean, we were just told that it's better to go for the whole kit and caboodle, that way you have it, and if you need it, you have it, and, uh...
The board is always here.
Did we, one of you gentlemen, live in Freetown?
Uh, no.
You've gone to this place. Say in Freetown, you can, you're, it's legal to put one or two cars on your property, per se, on your own property.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it would, like I said, but it was more of the, the aspect of the registry. I don't know if you've dealt with the registry on a regular basis, but it's not easy.
Sure.
It's not easy. So it was more of, it wasn't a matter of, you know, can we put 20 cars on a lot? We don't, we're not looking to do anything, anything like that. It was more if I wanna, uh, sell a car and I have to go to the registry, now I have this, you know, dealership license to deal with, you know, automotive instead of just motorcycles, and then I can be like, "Well, you only have a motorcycle license," you know what I mean? So that was our main thing with, with having the whole thing and why it was recommended to us in the first place, so...
Well, you're gonna end up with a dealer's license.
Yeah, I think if a registry...
But we can, we can limit it.
Right, right.
Okay. So my motion is to approve the license for Chopper Heads, uh, for motorcycles only, for 25 motorcycles. I don't know if there's a second.
Oh, I, I just have a concern. Can the community talk?
Sure.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Am I who?
I'm the buster.
Well, my name wasn't listed, but I was sent a notice. I live directly, uh, like catacorne across the street, so...
Were you notified by mail?
Certified.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I didn't get a return receipt, otherwise I'd have written.
Oh, I don't think I knew I needed to return the receipt. Sorry about that.
But you shouldn't have got the letter without signing it, right? Certified.
I did sign it.
You signed the green card, and it should be in a file.
We'll hear.
What's your last name?
Bertocci, B-E-R-T-O-C-C-H-I.
We checked off.
10 County Road. They did ask me to go to the post office to pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We got it.
Okay.
We'll step up, see what you guys say.
I've never done this before. Um, I have personally no issue with a motorcycle shop, none at all. Um, I am very concerned about one vehicle that's in the lot right now. Um, I'm clergy, um, and not that that, you know, that, I'm all cool with motorcycles, um, but the car out there with 666 on it?
Oh, the demolition derby vehicle.
Okay. It's just as offensive to me if you put a KKK sign up, if you put a plastic up, whatever, and I can't imagine, I, I was actually hoping other people would show up here. Um, I know there's a church down the street. I just can't imagine nobody else's... I don't know, it's just alarming to drive by it every day. Um, that's my feedback on that. Um, I have no problem with the business, none. You guys have actually had some business, and that's great. Um, but that car, um, I don't care if it's, my, you know, if it backed the lot, I don't care, but I just, it's an eyesore because it's, I don't know if it's...
It's gonna be gone through any road, moving to the left, right, until it leaves.
Okay.
It was a demolition derby, it's not a...
It was meant as a decoration, basically, for grand opening, but I mean, to us, it's more of a advertisement of the motorcycle shop. Uh, it was brought to the demolition derby and never, never demoed, but, uh, we've had it.
So we're...
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, but basically, I mean, it's just, uh, I mean, when you go to a demolition derby, people decorate their cars all kinds of crazy ways, and that's all it is.
Okay, well, I don't know...
I mean, as far as 666, I mean, it might be offensive to you, but it's not like a literal thing, like we sit there worshiping Satan and we're, we're inviting Satan worshippers to our shop, it's just like...
Are you literally not moving it out of the lot to the back?
Yes, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, no problem.
And you guys can take care of it, you gentlemen, right?
Well, they can change the number and put it up.
Yeah, make it 888, I don't care.
It's gonna be demolished anyway, one way or the other, so it's...
Okay.
So that is your...
That's my concern, just 'cause I live so close, and it's just, it just kinda bothers me.
Can I just say, sometimes, these guys seem really reasonable, and sometimes, you don't always have to wait for a selectmen's meeting to come forward. Just go knock on their door and ask them.
Well, actually, I didn't, you know, I don't, I didn't wanna come across as, um, I'm not militant.
No, no, I, you're, you're...
I'm not over conservative.
No, you're, you're of a concern in, in...
And, uh, I didn't, I wanted, I, I don't know, I was just, I was just happy to get the notice, and I thought, "I'll come and hear what everybody has to say," and I just wanted to make my voice known that it's just not...
And we have an open door policy to all the neighbors. We don't wanna cause any trouble in the area, so feel free to come over any time.
And a lot of times, being a woman, going over to a place where there's a lot of men. You know, I live near there too, and going over there, there's, you know...
Identify yourself, please.
I, I live also at 10 County Road.
This is my wife.
My, we're married. So, um, going over there and there's a lot of guys, you know, it's a very guy situation with motorcycles, and we didn't wanna go over and be like, "Hey, nice to meet you, could you get rid of your car?" You know?
Don't worry about it. I work with guys all the time. They're not that distinct.
Well, you know, that car, that car kinda leads somebody to believe that there could be retribution for even making a comment about it.
No, don't...
And, uh, I didn't really wanna bring my family into that.
Right, that's in the...
That's fine.
So, I got a motion on the fourth, fifth minute, okay?
There's a second. I really don't have a problem with the car thing, but I'm gonna go along with this motion anyway.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve, uh, class two motor vehicle's license for motorcycles only.
Motorcycles only, up to 25 motorcycles.
Up to 25 motorcycles.
Got a house inside, right?
Housed inside.
We weren't allowed to bring them outside during the day.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
You're a lot, you're fine.
Just wanna make sure.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and a license will be granted. My suggestion would be that if you have a problem, get a box of cookies.
Get a what?
Yeah, we're a big fan of cookies.
Ah!
You'll shut the place right down and let cookies, you guys chat, but the best policy in neighborhood is, is gentleman hit it on head. Come see us, chat, get to know each other. From their perspective, it's, it's nice to have friendly neighbors that are looking after your business when you're not there.
Yeah, I actually wanted to come over one day, but that's just...
You want people saying, "I don't want people messing around my business." And if you have that thought, my standpoint is, these, these guys seem to be perfect gentlemen and honorable. Now, what I say about them next year, who knows? But right now...
Thank you.
I think you guys are good to go.
Well, we were in Freetown for two and a half years, from 2003 to 2005, and we never ever had an issue with any of the neighbors.
Well, hope you stay long in this thing.
Well, we only now...
Well, yeah, we only owned the building, yeah. The reason why we had to leave is we out, we outthrew it, we only had part of it, so...
We're always excited to have new business coming to town, we really are, and I, you know, to have a couple of young guys like you that are out there, you know, scraping up, and who knows?
We, we're not, we're not kissing up 'cause you've already approved it, but, uh, I mean, between me and him, we'd like to thank the town of Freetown, because you guys have been more than helpful, uh, more than appreciative, and we appreciate that, because we started our business in New Bedford, and it took us two years just to get our occupancy permit to actually operate.
Wow.
Uh, it was nothing but, you know, roadblocks, and you guys have made it, you know, very , uh, easy to work in Freetown, and we, we very appreciate it.
When you start your television show, you can introduce...
Okay. We'll make sure we have some of the town people to come to, so we'll film in here.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you to all you guys, appreciate it.
You're awesome.
Must be that building about...
Good luck, good luck in your endeavor.
Very successful.
Thank you. And the building commission, they give you a hot time?
And the building commission, they give you a hot time?
Thank you.
No, he's a good guy.
Oh, geez.
Good guy.
Don't get, don't get rid of him, don't get that out. Let me know the next steps.
Okay.
No hard feelings.
Yeah, no, it's not a problem.
It's two sides.
We didn't, we didn't get one, but I can tell. Yeah, uh, well, that's what we're on now.
Okay, next, we're gonna take action relative to who resigned in their department transfer request for legal counsel last submitted by the town administrator.
Actually, I think that, um, I've been on vacation, so I didn't really submit it. I think that, this grew out of your request, I think, once we're up on the town, uh, town accountant.
Yeah.
I don't see her here, uh, yet, but, um, uh, as you know, we benefited from the fact that Maya decided to reimburse us for some legal bills that were incurred. And, um, and the check, uh, went to, uh, to the government page. They set up an account and basically credited our, uh, bills for a period of time. For most of this year, we've received credit against all of our legal services. The town accountant, uh, feels that, uh, what should have happened is that the, uh, that the, that the credit, or the credit for Maya should have come to the town. And the, uh, and, and then we, we, we had already appropriated the money for legal services. We just pay it out of, out of the budget. So, it's a bookkeeping entry more than anything at the end, right? So, I, um, I had some correspondence while I was on vacation regarding to this. And, um, I told, um, our town accountant that she was the new sheriff on the block, and that's what she wanted to do. It was just more work for her. Uh, and, um, 'cause she felt strongly about it, I had no objection to her submitting it. And I told her that we were blessed to have her as a town accountant, and we not only did the regular work, but shortstop things like this.
Yeah.
We did extra work, you know, and, uh, doing it the way that she thinks is most appropriate. So, that's the explanation.
Can I also comment?
Yes, sir.
It, it, it's more than, uh, being the new sheriff on the block.
Yeah.
She took, she took it one step further, and she went to our auditors.
Yes.
And ran it by the auditors to make sure that her interpretation wasn't being too aggressive.
Yeah.
And the auditors came back and said, you're absolutely correct. It should have been done, the money should have came to the town of Free Town as a receipt.
Yeah.
And the appropriate, uh, the bill should have been charged off as under the fiscal year fifteen appropriation. Consequently, that's why we have this request for transfer.
Right, exactly.
Make a motion to, um, submit the inter, interdepartmental transfer request for legal counsel as submitted by the town administrator and the town accountant in the amount, in the amount of twenty-four thousand one thirty-two seventy-three. And forward that to, um, the finance committee for their approval.
Second.
And the motion made and seconded is stated by selectman Pacheco to approve resigning their department transfer, et cetera, et cetera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that, that motion passes to approve and sign the department transfer request for legal counsel submitted by town administrator in the amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars. Next, next, to approve signed reserve transfer request for elections as submitted, submitted by Jacqueline Brown, town clerk.
Make a motion to submit the reserve fund transfer in the mo, in the amount of one thousand three hundred fifty dollars and eleven cents as submitted by, um, Jacqueline Brown for town elections to the finance committee.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve, uh, sign a reserve fund transfer request for elections as submitted by Jacqueline Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion passes to be submitted to the fine fintown committee for their approval. Third, approve and sign interdepartmental transfer for electrical inspectors as submitted by Scott Marbado, building inspector. Could you give me just a little background in this, Scott, please?
Oh, sure, well, it's, um, the permits for rooftop solar are just, um, just popular. We have an awful lot of them. We did one transfer this year, and, you know, we're learning a lot, but still, the demand is just high. You know, we increased the permit fees, um, you know, it's a hundred and fifty dollars for electrical permits, but it's just, uh, just a lot of work out there for the, for the inspections. That's really all there is to it. Couldn't gauge it, couldn't predict it, but that's exactly what we owe them, just for inspections.
Okay, just more inspections, more work, more...
That's it, yeah, the fees went up and the workload's up.
Can you retain a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer, interdepartmental transfer of six-sixty-five.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to assign the department transfer for electrical inspectors as submitted by Scott Marbado. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, to sign, approve, and interdepartmental transfer for the highway department as submitted by Charles Matt Comber, highway supervisor and surveyor. Chuck, just a quick background, please.
Basically, Billy's putting in for early retirement. We sent a letter to the finance committee December second, thinking that we're gonna need about eleven hundred and sixty dollars, uh, through not spending any overtime money and saving here, saving there. I, that six hundred dollars, I wanna change it to four hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's the, the, the amount that I got from Kim today, so all we're gonna need is four hundred and sixty-six dollars to be transferred from the streetlight account to personnel.
Have a motion on this, please?
I'm making a motion to, uh, transfer four sixty-six between streetlights and highway solar.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to transfer four sixty-six dollars from, uh, the streetlights to highway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Matt Comber. Uh, next, approve and sign a reserve fund transfer request for, for treasurer submitted by Jessica Thomas, temporary treasurer. I'm not sure what this one is about, but, um...
This, this has to do with, uh, the amount is, uh, five thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Okay.
And this has to do with the, uh, with the, uh...
The loss of the...
The, the loss of, uh, a treasurer.
Oh, my.
Final payment.
Final payment.
I'm making a motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve, uh, the transfer request in the amount of five thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents as submitted by Jessica Thomas. Final payment for, uh, on treasurer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, motion passes. Uh, next, the signed chapter ninety, I love these acronyms, W R A P. I've never seen that in my life, Chuck.
You have to talk to Charlie Baker, he's the one that jumped it up.
Okay, I haven't come down.
Yeah, let's, let's take him around.
It's basically the win, rapid winter recovery, well, something. Uh, Charlie Baker gave us sixty thousand three hundred five dollars. We crack sealed various roads, we spent sixty thousand three hundred two dollars and ten cents.
Ten cents?
And ten cents.
Who did we give the dime to? That's what I'm wondering.
The dime, the dime was paid to...
You even know, okay.
Either crack sealing incorporated or the various, the various police officers that work for us.
Have a motion to, uh, sign, approve, and...
Make a motion to sign the final report in the amount of sixty thousand three oh five.
Second.
Three oh two.
Three oh two, sorry, ten, I saw.
Have a motion made and seconded to sign the final report in the amount of sixty thousand three hundred two dollars and ten cents. All in favor?
Bye.
As close as we can come.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you again, Mr. Matt.
So, Chuck, what you're saying is Charlie Baker threw the generosity of the taxpayers of Massachusetts, gave us extra money.
Charlie Baker here with sixty thousand three oh five.
I just wanna make sure, we all get...
He giving him back ninety-five cents.
Charlie Baker's giving back a dollar, no, a dollar and a half, as close as we can come.
Next on the agenda, a sign of proclamation in honor of Cape Verdean Day as requested by the Reverend Curtis Dyess. Pleasure to see you, Reverend, how are you? Ooh, gotta take his gum, I hear that.
Good to be here with you.
How are you?
I'm doing well, I'm sorry.
Marvelous.
So, am I...
You're up, you're up, you're up.
First of all, I wanna thank you for allowing me to be here today. Um, I happened to be at the annual business meeting. I thought that was one of the most tremendous business meetings, all of us together, and I thought it was so organized, I thought it was excellent. About Mike, that guy Mike was outstanding, and, um, he was tremendous, so...
Mike, with you.
Reading skills are wonderful, isn't it? I mean, it was wonderful, so...
Was he a good an orator, or is Reverend Dyess, do you think?
That night, he was.
He was good.
That night, he was.
Reverend, we have another important one Wednesday night.
Yeah, that was, I might be there, though.
I hope so.
I hope so. I was there, playing, so... And I wanna publicly, I wanna thank Jack and his wife, um, over the Christmas season, they were kind enough to give out, uh, thousands upon thousands upon thousands of toys, um, to us and to the community at lodges and stuff. And I just wanna publicly say thank you and your wife, that we gave out bicycles and toys, and our donations have been tremendous, and children...
Uh, it's a Toys for Tots program, and, uh, my wife, uh, I think she went through nearly ten thousand toys, in the door and out, uh, through, throughout the region. Glad to have you.
Okay, the purpose of me being here today, um, you know, at Cowan Pentecost Church, we, a year, we do a community day. It's a event that we usually do, and we invite the senior citizens. I, I try to invite the senior citizens three to four times a year for, um, luncheon, you know, of all kind.
You see this?
Yeah. I'm fifty-five years old, I don't know if that's a senior citizen, but, um...
Wonderful lunches, I might add.
Thank you very much, and we have a wonderful time. So, this year, people approached me early in the year about, um, a one-time event. Instead of having just a, um, community day, Free Town Community Day that we always host for all the children, for me, business, senior citizens, people from Briley Road that have been there for many, many years approached me. And they wanted to do something special for their mothers and great-grandmothers, the matriarchs of the community. The ones that passed away, it's about twenty-four, um, individuals, mothers, they, and I think I, I have their names here, I'll do you that. And when they wanted to do something special, they were a part of them, and they wanted to bring all the people that was on Briley Road and back into the community as a celebration, you know, for, um, you guys, you know, the history of Free Town. The brothers on Briley Road and sisters and Chase real wide there, um, Cape Verde community has been here over a hundred and ten years, almost a hundred and twenty years. My grandmother was born here, um, my mother was born here. And, um, I was joking to myself, um, they, they're really townies, you know what I mean? And, and, and I was joking myself, they were, they were, they're the townies that were really brownies, that's what it is, you know? Before they were the Brownie organization, we, we were here, you know what I mean? And, and we're happy, you know, that's where God has placed us here, it's, um, been a good... So, they came to the church and asked me if I would, uh, consider helping them out in, in doing this. They've been working very diligently for the last three or four months, um, almost every Thursday night, putting it together, at, you know, people come in. And I did, uh, go to the chief of police and the fire chief and ask them for if it's possible that we can come and do the celebration. Uh, so, it's gonna go, if you, your permission, it's gonna go from ten o'clock until four o'clock. Then after that, they're gonna go to the VFW and have a great celebration with Chopps Turner and other singers like that, okay? So, it, um, it's, we're gonna have clowns and moonwalks and pony rides and all the things that we always do for everyone. So, everyone's welcome to come, the senior citizens will give us the list. And for all the senior citizens that come and they sign up, uh, right here at the senior citizen council for agent, they're gonna have a welcome table, and we're gonna give a coupon, this is like a raffle ticket. For any senior citizens that comes, they're gonna come and welcome table, they're gonna give, they can have a free meal, uh, what, you know, hamburgers, hot dogs, uh, potato salad, whatever they choose. And that's what we're gonna, um, do for the senior citizens. Uh, just to regress a little bit, I hope in long term, as a pastor of Cowan Pentecost Church, that one day we can maybe get a full bank together for the senior citizens for Free Town. I think it's necessary, and that's what, uh, we're talking about at the church. As you know, um, this September, um, they're gonna be in my twentieth year, I finished my twentieth year at the church, so I appreciate... Now, I appreciate you guys coming down for our anniversary celebration, uh, when you did come, they, they're gonna have one also on September fifth, and they'll send our invitation, just some hors d'oeuvres from three to four, and, you know, function like that, just nice, good times, so... But to get back on here, um, just asking, the reason why, um, we're coming and asking for a proclamation, because when I was involved with Beth Law in, on the African's Children Choir, she wanted to bring them in, but you needed a host pastor. And I hosted it at that time, and they made a proclamation of it, you know? So, that was my theory. I said, maybe this year, we can make a proclamation on July twenty-fifth in town of Free Town, it'd be called Free Town Cape, Cape Verdean Community Day. Um, that we could put a flag up and, you know, put it on posters, and I thought it would bring a lot of joy and make it harmonious enough. We know, uh, in, with you guys' relationships, you guys have been tremendous, and we have a wonderful relationship, and I thought it would bring harmony and unity to the whole community. And, um, that's why I come today, to present, see if it's possible that we can, uh, do this, so we can all have a great celebration, you know? That's what we're trying to do.
I'll make the motion to, uh, sign a proclamation in honor of the Cape Verdean Day as requested by Reverend Dyess, and we'll make that, um, I'll read it out. Whereas the town of Free Town has an interest in promoting the, whereas the town of Free Town would like to promote peace and international diversity. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Selectmen, by virtue of the authority vested in us as the Board of Selectmen of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the day of July twenty-fifth, twenty-fifteen, as Briley Road Cape Verdean Community Day, and commend that in Free Town.
Uh, second motion.
I have a mo, motion made and seconded as stated by selectman Pacheco, uh, to name the Cape Verdean Day, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Reverend Dyess.
Reverend Dyess, we have a, we have a Cape Verdean proclamation day, so... Is that one of the posters?
Yes.
Let me hold that up for the camera.
And I also would like to, um, see if, with, part of this event, at one to two o'clock, this is, um, this is a poster, I'm sorry, this came off the print, so that... At one to two o'clock, we're having a ceremony and, like, a welcoming.
Yeah.
And after, after welcoming, we're going to, um, you know, have a DVD player, just a seven, ten minutes of all the matriarchs at that period of time. Then, if you wanted to present, if somebody wanted to present from the Board of Selectmen, that proclamation right there, that would be excellent. Then, um, you, you know, this woman Cindy Conway just passed away, she was an attorney, uh, and she, father Ben Oliver lived on Briley Road. We're gonna do something, you know, in memory of her, and Chopps Turner's gonna sing. Then after that, what we're gonna do, we're gonna walk outside the church, and we got a memorial, uh, from Rex Memorial, and it got the names of the twenty-four matriarchs, the women. And they already have a place for it, we already, already paid for, and it's right, uh, underneath the cross, it's a beautiful sight. And we're gonna go out, and they're gonna name off the names one by one, one by one, it, like a tribute to them, and at that time, then we're gonna just, uh, thank God and, you know, clap, then we're just gonna go into the festivities, okay? So, if any, if you, you know, of course, you're always welcome to come, and, um, we thank you for your participation in the past, but, um, that's exactly what we'll do. If you, any of you wanna come and, uh, read a little proclamation, that, that would be good, okay?
See what we can do. Any questions?
I think...
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to make selectwoman Pacheco an honorary senior for that day?
I tell you, but let me say this.
Sorry, you don't pick that one up.
When Lisa was kind enough to come for one of our anniversaries, and she, and many of yous have already participated, we had a wonderful time.
We did.
We welcomed her, you know, we, we respected and loved her, and often, uh, on behalf of the church, you know, I've been here twenty years now, I've been here for twenty years, um, I appreciate what you're doing, I thank you for... I thank you for your leadership and goodness. I see great things in store for Freetown and I think it's part of the great putting us together.
For one, I'm going to spit shine my walker. You want to end up there.
Yes, I want to. All right, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you ever need me or something, feel free to call.
Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to see you.
Thank you. Do you want these Reverend?
No, you can have, I got, I got.
He wants to put one of my.
You can put it in town hall.
Okay, there we go.
Who down there?
Oh, I don't know if you need the flag. We bought a flag. If they sometimes, with African Children Choir, they flew the flag at town hall. So I bought a flag.
Really?
Okay.
So I believe they did. So I bought a flag if it's permissible under the American flag.
For that day, yes.
All right, for that day.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Wasn't that nice?
See?
It's good.
Okay. See Reverend, this year sixteen reappointments are up next.
Oh, no, it's not. We'll be here. Yeah, sign animal control warrant, you know, signing it with Cranberry Tri-Fest. And a be, and a be. She moved it down, and, and.
Okay.
Yeah, she moved it down here.
All right. Ambulance abatements for the month of June submitted by the fire chief.
I think it's an amount of thirty-four thousand.
I can tell you that in a second. This is what I'm.
Thirty-four nine two two seventy-three. What a memory. No, I haven't.
Thirty-four thousand nine twenty-two seventy-two.
I said, I think it's about thirty-four thousand. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, we have a motion made in second and to approve the ambulance abatements for the month of June submitted by the fire chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is to sign animal control. Do you want that?
I make a motion to sign the animal control warrant. These are for dogs that have not been registered, so you need to make sure that you register your dogs by town by law as requested by the animal control officer.
Have a second?
Fourth with it, and right, well, second.
She'll come after you and she should.
Have a motion made in second and to sign animal control warrants for those, and people that didn't register their pets. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, can I, no, can I just go, I don't know if you've read in the newspaper or anything about this little puppy that was, this family got into an accident on Route twenty-four. The dog was shaken up and left, a little chihuahua.
Oh, yeah.
Did you read about that? Days this dog was missing and Lisa was very vigilant in doing what she did and working with the owners and they were out there day and night. And about two to three days later, they found the dog. So she was just very prudent, she was smart, she knew what had to be done. She would work side by side with the owners. I was in the Full River Herald, she's done an outstanding job and I just want to say on the record that I thank her and I'm sure that you all thank her too, because that family was beside themselves, so.
She's very good.
I mean, when you're thinking about a chihuahua that was out there day and night with no food and no water and.
A little guy like that with predators around.
Yep. It was awesome.
Do you know one of our fire officers?
Next is to approve a signing of the thirteenth annual Cranberry Tri-Fest for August twenty-second and twenty-third, two fifteen through ten.
Make a motion to approve both the fire chief and the police chief both signed up on it.
Second.
Have a motion made and approved to approve the signing of the thirteenth annual Cranberry Tri-Fest as approved by the fire and police chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Last but not least, the second gen, action agenda is sign reappointments for fiscal year sixteen. Are you going to read them or are you just going to say as read?
As prepared by the administrative assistant. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments? Term expires June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. As prepared by Ally Galt, the administrative assistant.
Second.
Do I have a motion? You made the motion?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If you all want to read them, they're all right here. There's ten pages full of them.
It takes about fifteen or twenty minutes to sign all those things.
They're pretty good.
Already.
Then we have to just sign the list. We just have to sign the list off.
Next on the agenda is Board of Health. Anything from the Board of Health?
I have one more thing. I have one more thing. We have a letter from the planning board. I'm trying to find it.
It's right here.
Right, here it is. Give two more things. Did you print this out for him? I could have printed it out for you.
I was, I was, I was at the town hall this morning at nine o'clock.
This kind of like has to be.
And she was kind enough to print it out.
Stop that.
You can tell when you're negotiating.
You were at the post office at nine o'clock.
Right.
At the post office at nine o'clock? Then I must have been at nine-thirty at the town hall.
Okay, so it comes from the planning board.
Just to let the record show that Mr. Select would say that it's being schmoozed. Our administrative assistant and it's working.
Oh, boy.
It's working.
All right. Honorable Selectmen, Mr. Robert Raymond has delivered to your office in the office of the town clerk his letter resigning from planning board. Mr. Raymond was an incredible asset to the board and they deeply are grateful for his as a service as an alternate member from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and three and as a member from two thousand and three to twenty fifteen. Master on Law Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one A outlines process when a vacancy occurs and just to let everybody know that the planning board members are elected and any unexpired term shall be filled by the appointment of the Board of Selectmen and the remainder of the members of the planning board until the next annual election. So the planning board wishes to move forward with this vacancy and they want to put it on the town website for a period of two weeks. And then we can come together, have a joint meeting and we can discuss the candidates and fill the vacancy filled by a rule call, which is a pleasure.
Pleasure, just go ahead and post it.
Yeah. Okay, so I have a.
Motion.
In a second.
Motion second and to go ahead and post it, I guess.
Post it for two weeks and then that'll bring us closer to our date of our next meeting and we can go from there.
Okay. Mr. Sadek, anything on the Board of Health?
No, I'm not done yet.
Oh, you're not done yet. I'm sorry.
We got to take that vote, don't we?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, I might have one or two more things.
One more.
Okay. We have a change of status form for building inspector or interim building inspector Joe Visco for the rate of thirty-five dollars per inspection and a rate of forty-three oh five for hourly rate. Do I have a motion?
Sure made.
Do I have a second?
Uh, with discussion.
Okay.
I'll say it with discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm a little bit confused. I know the thirty-five dollar rates for the inspections because that's where we pay out other inspectors. What is the hourly rate, Scott?
Well, historically, I don't know exactly for sure, but I think the interpretation that I got is that if we require Joe to do office work that, you know, he expects to get the exact pay that he receives in Fall River, you know, I mean, I think if you didn't have somebody, it was appropriate. You know, I don't know if it's necessary now or, you know, what the, you know, wisdom is to have it, I have no idea.
The reason is that if he hurt himself or if he was out for a length of time and we needed the Fall River Building Inspector who is Joe Visco to come in and serve the town of Freetown, that's how that, that is that hourly rate. Rarely do we ever use it, but it's there in case, God forbid, anything happens.
So if this rate is, matches his hourly rate.
That's why I understand you accorded to Joe, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set.
All right, Board of Health.
I'm done.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hi. Not really worried about it now.
What a health. Mr. Sadek. I have something on the Board of Health, only because this was recommended by the health agent. And I just found out tonight, the historical society down in the Sonic Elm Street, they interact, sometimes have to come for permits and they've been being charged for the permit that they need. And they made a request to the health agent for the town, to see if the town would waive those permits. And I'm bringing it forward, I guess, that's, his recommendation was to waive the permits for the.
Are they the only ones that come forward for permits? Do we waive, there are no, is that the.
Well, we've waived, we've waived other permits, like for the voice council, stuff like that we have.
Voice pub, yeah, we did the voice pub. All right.
This is a, this is the Freetown Historical Society.
Right, I'm just wondering, is there any other Freetown wards that come forward that we waive permits for?
I don't know.
Did he mention it? Okay. Does this even. All right. I didn't ask.
We can wait, I don't know what you guys want to do.
That's fine. I just don't know, like, are we going to make that a policy now, like?
We've got to face the question.
On the individual basis.
You know, or.
Kimberly.
Could I just ask, have you considered the anti-aid amendment about benefiting nonprofit organizations? You can't benefit nonprofits? So by waiving the fees.
We cannot benefit that.
Wouldn't that violate the anti-aid amendment?
Okay, then we can't, we can't do it.
Well, I'm just saying you should consider that.
Well, I mean, I wasn't even aware of it.
Okay.
So in that case, just a.
We'll, we'll just dizzle that discussion right now. Okey-dokey.
Okay.
Girlfriend's a treasure. Next.
You want, should I ask? Okay.
How did you find this stuff out? I want to know. How did you learn all this stuff?
Years of experience.
There's wealth of information over there.
I just read the law book as a law geek.
Well, that sounds like a good time. I think I'm going to go home and read the law book tonight.
It's come up before in previous experience.
Do you know anything about small outboard motors, Kimberly?
What's that?
Small outboard motors.
Are you having a problem?
No. Okay, I figured I'd take a shot.
Sorry.
Okay. Are you done, Mr. Falls Chairman?
I have nothing else to talk about.
That one didn't go over too well.
It didn't go over very well at all.
Move on to new business, dates for the upcoming Board of Selectment's meetings. July the twenty-seventh, August the tenth, August the twenty-fourth. Is everybody good with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to be on vacation for the whole month of August.
Okay.
No, 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 I'm going to.
I would like to mention under new business that we have a special town meeting Wednesday. To discuss the Richmond Road Bridge project yet again. As the chairman, I'm always speaking for myself, I was really surprised when at the last special town meeting it was defeated. And I'd like to go on record as saying, this isn't something that the selectmen made up. I mean, this is something that the state inspected the bridges and said, you have to fix it. It wasn't a question of when or take your time or keep us abreast of what your plans are. They pretty much mandated we fix the bridge. And the threat for that, not that they have a threat, but they have the power to lower the weight limit of the bridge beneath, but a school bus weighs. And if they do that, the cost of just adding an extra school bus route to service the six or eight children in that area would cost eighty thousand dollars a year. So we're having another special town meeting to approach the good citizens of Freetown yet again and explain our quandary to them. And hopefully people understand and get behind the project, so.
They do the stuff.
And we're hoping it'll be funded out of our stabilization.
Can I just mention, if anybody read the article in the Standard Times the other, on Saturday, the article was in essence inaccurate because we are not going back to the taxpayers asking them to reconsider a debt exclusion or an override. And I think there will be a retraction in the paper sometime tomorrow, Wednesday morning. Please show up this coming Wednesday night at seven-thirty. If you haven't got anything better to do, it's important to come in. Seven-thirty, right? Seven? Seven? Seven o'clock, sorry.
Thanks.
And come here and cast your vote.
Cast your vote.
All right.
That's what it says here, seven o'clock.
Anything else on the new business? Old business? I am sick of seeing key fobs. I'm sick of hearing about status of.
Right? I think we said we could take that off.
Okay.
Special town meeting articles can come off at this.
No, no, no. We're going to keep that on.
Status of course, off Main Street, key fobs, Richmond Road Bridge, we just discussed. Special town meeting items, we just went over, so.
This will be for the special town meeting in the fall. Like one of, we already have one, which is the bylaw to, to do that bylaw that we can put wording underneath a special article, so.
Yeah, if we have to go to the vote, so people understand.
Yep.
That's it. That's it for the open meeting. We're going to go back into executive session, so.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session or to go back into, did I say that? Go back into it and not to read, not to come out in the open session.
Item number two.
Item number two. Mr. Sadek, yes. Mr. Pacheco.
Yes.
Mr. Baumgartner, yes. Thank you all for coming, it's been wonderful.
Okay, I'll now ask the town clerk to come up to read the warrant. Warrant for the special town meeting Wednesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, seven o'clock PM. Chief of the constables in the Town of Freetown greeting, in the name of the commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Freetown who are qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the town, I'm sorry, in the Freetown Elementary School Auditorium, forty-three Oak Grove East, Freetown, Massachusetts, the fifteenth day of July, two thousand and fifteen, and seven o'clock PM, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places. A Sonic Post Office, East Freetown Post Office, the stores of Quick Dicks in Freetown, Junior's Quick Bickens, East Freetown Junior's Convenience Store, and Freetown Town Hall, and the Freetown Communications Center. Hereof fail not make return of the original warrant, with your doing thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown, this twenty-seventh day of June, annual domini, two thousand and fifteen, signed by the Freetown Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, town of Freetown, Massachusetts, I have this day posted attested copies of the warrant, in the designated places described herein, on July first, two thousand and fifteen. Signed, Carlton E. Abbott, Junior Constable.
There is only one article tonight, and there's only one color of vote ticket tonight, and just remember, please, that if you have any questions or comments on the article, to come up to the microphone and state your name before you speak. Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the stabilization fund and/or borrow the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for repairs to the Richmond Road Bridge, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that, as necessary to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow a certain amount under Chapter forty-four of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, and/or take any other action relative thereto. This article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it requires a two-thirds majority vote.
Make a motion, excepted as read, with amendment to fund it by stabilization.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to adopt the article as read, funded by the stabilization fund. Finance Committee?
We're in favor of the stabilization fund.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is adopted unanimously.
Make motion to adjourn.
The motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn is adopted, have a good night. One majority.